Hi, how you doing? I'm Neat Coast Pastors.
John Bolandwell, nice to meet ya.
Pleased to meet you. I'm from the Confederated Salishia Coopin tribes of the Flathead Nation.
Yeah, so you're the guy I talked to on the phone. Oh, you're from Alaska.
Yeah, I'm an environmental sociologist.
Can you tell me what your name is, please?
My name is Steve Ziverick.
And where are you from?
I'm from Chicago, Illinois.
And what are you doing here?
I'm a professional videographer. And I have a nonprofit called Unit 2. And we're looking at impacts on industrial oil projects.
And so, how did you find out about, um, me?
Through your channel, on YouTube.
Okay, somebody basically directed you to look at it?
No, I just, I was doing research in the area. When I first heard about the Enbridge oil spill, I immediately came up here with my camera. And I had, uh, met with some community members. Went to the town meeting in, uh, Marshall, Michigan, actually. Um, and so I just kept on watching you, and I was really fascinated by what you were doing. And that's when I contacted you. So, I'm doing a lot of other projects as well that deal with other impacts of industrial uses on, um, the environment. But I really wanna make people understand that this is serious. Um, you can't completely destroy a creek like this. I, I just, I can't understand how, I mean, how we can let someone operate like this in the United States of America after they destroy a major wa- body of water. This is part of, this is part of the Great Lakes watershed. So, I think it's really important that we understand that these kinds of disasters are changing our ecosystem in the future generations. I mean, these are, these are the type of disasters that have long, long impacts. We're talking about, um, years. I mean, I don't even know if this could ever be fixed. I mean, thousands of years, maybe. I don't know. But, um, you know, water is a very important, um, natural resource. And we need to start protecting it, so.
Yep.
This is Enbridge truck, huh?
Yeah, that's Enbridge Security, right there. I don't think my camera was on that first time. I might need to put it. Yep.
Wow, amazing to me. I just, you don't know until, until you're here. So...
This is, this is basically a war zone.
Yeah.
Let's walk right up to him. How you doing, Enbridge? Did I do something wrong? Everything's fine. Police said I can videotape this stuff.
Alright, well, if you guys are all set, then, um, we're good to go.
Why are you concerned if I show oil on Enbridge property?
I'll see ya.
Why are you concerned about that? I'm trying to give you a hard time.
Have a good one, guys.
This is, uh, this is good video. It, it feels awesome to confront them like that because Enbridge, this is what Enbridge told the police. They said, "Well, we're worried about him trespassing." Why would you worry about me standing on property, showing oil that's been buried or not cleaned up properly? Isn't Enbridge, this Canadian company, supposed to make sure it's done right? And if somebody says it's not done right or proves it, why would you try to get that guy arrested? Wouldn't you say thank you?
Let's say one, 9HRS, R6. Uh, were you able to tell us, like, can the name of the creek, is still Talmadge Creek?
Yeah, this is Talmadge Creek, right here.
You didn't know what the name is?
This right here is Section 3.
Okay, Section 3 of Talmadge Creek.
Right.
Give us another coordinate.
Right behind you, Section 2. We're gonna go to Section 1. I mean, there's, you know, there's 10 sections to Talmadge Creek that go into Kalamazoo River. And, um, all of it was cleared. In October of 2010, all of this was signed off 100% clear. But what they did in the last two months is dug the whole thing back out and redone it.
Why?
Why? Cause they buried oil. And I proved it.
Okay, so, so did they get another EPA permit?
Yeah, they got, they got a DNR or DEQ permit to do it.
DEQ from the state of Michigan?
Yes. That said the EPA in, in Enbridge did not clean it up properly.
Okay, um, what... How did that come about? I mean, did they, they bought, they self-reported?
What happened is in February of 2011, I brought the press out here and showed them where the oil was buried. They had no choice but to do an investigation. They had no choice but to start doing testing. It was out in the public. And, you know, if, if I wouldn't have ever complained, the grass would've grew two foot tall and no one would've ever said a word. It would've, it would've stayed buried for the next 50 years.
Have cracks in them later. Um, Enbridge will be liable. Set guidelines for maintaining the integrity of your topsoil. Don't let them just put the gravel across your whole yard, okay? Make sure that all this stuff is written in your contract. Set workable guidelines for hours. Do you want stadium lights shining in your bedroom windows at night? What time you gonna let them on your property? What time they have to be off? And if they're not off at that time, what's the penalty going to be? What are they gonna pay you for every hour over the time that they've set? Set guidelines.
And when I hand out lists to people, it's like, somebody could say, "Oh, that's legal advice, and therefore, you know, you're bound by, if you take one of these items and totally, something goes wrong, come back against me." So I've got three paragraphs of disclaimers at the top. I tried to get the Bureau of Investigation, Livingston County, to kinda get on board and work on this, but it's, these are big issues. And everybody's kinda afraid to put their name on it at this point in time. My name is the only one on here. Um, but my phone number's on there. I've got an office downtown Howell. And I've also, when I work with Kim Savage, I emailed a copy to her. Unfortunately, it's only about two hours ago. So I don't think she's actually crap.
I mean, it really is. You wanna get out of there when this spill happens, and you wanna have a place to go. And so, and I, the response of Marshall was not too hot. Are they getting any better? Is there any, any place we can go to see if they're improving?
Um, I talked to, um, a guy named Harold Winnie today, who's with the US Transportation Transportation Department, who fights safety. I'm a very personal person to talk to. And I said, "I need to know if the guidelines for dealing with this heavier oil have been made yet." I have different guidelines for pipe construction. And he said, "No." And he said, "But, um, they're gonna be considering whether to do it, and they'll have an answer about considering about doing it within the next 18 months."
You know, Beth, I have to comment on that now. Hold on there. You're talking Harold Winnie. You said Harold Winnie, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. He's the same guy that flew in to look at my farm whenever I was having all kinds of issues with all this sinking down in. And he walked across from one side to the other with me, kicked some stones. Gee, Mrs. Brimhall, I don't see anything wrong here. The exact same spots where they did five integrity digs. That's the Harold Winnie.
I know.
Well, a couple of things. We talked about staking earlier. We cornered Enbridge in a room. With how many, five of their people? And about 15 to 20 of us. And, uh, as to the staking, they're going to tell you they don't need to do that anymore. Uh, there's technology today that can do all that, and they don't have to come out and put wooden stakes in anymore. So be careful of that one. And tell them to stake it anyway regardless of technology. Uh, interestingly enough, there's an article in the Wall Street Journal today. On the marketplace section, those that get it, maybe you haven't had a chance, but I believe you can Google this, uh, WSJ, and then "Pipeline Operators to Rival Keystone." Now guess who one of the operators is?
Enbridge!
Enbridge, it is! Gives a lady a golden goose or something. Two major energy companies are planning to build new pipelines to move as much as 850,000 barrels of crude oil a day from Canada to refineries along the Gulf Coast by mid-2014 in the latest effort to cope with the surge of oil production in North America. The two companies are Houston-based Enterprise Products Partners LP and Enbridge Incorporated of Canada will compete with TransCanada Corporation's Keystone XL proposed pipeline to move crude from the oil sands of Alberta to US refineries. That is all interesting. You can read it for yourself. I wanna tell, I wanna point you to another part of that article which raises a lot of our concerns. Uh, "The new pipelines will require approval from the US Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, which oversees how much pipeline owners can charge for moving products, and the US Army Corps of Engineers, which must review the engineering." Now remember, these are new pipelines, I believe. "So, crude from oil sands may be more corrosive than other oils and thus make pipelines more likely to leak," Mr. Swift said. "An oil sands crude leak from an Enbridge pipeline near the Kalamazoo River in Michigan in July 2010 proved to be particularly costly, costly to clean up," he said. "The NRDC, Natural Resource Defense Council, does not oppose pipelines, but we do oppose tar sands pipelines," Mr. Swift said. "It makes sense to know how to build a pipeline safely before you proceed with this kind of infrastructure." Um, "The US Department of Transportation's Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration is studying whether Canadian oil sands are more corrosive than other crude oils with the results expected by July of 2014." And, and we, we were at a meeting last week with a Dr. Ricky Ott from, uh, I don't know where she's from.
She's from Alaska.
I was gonna say Alaska, but she's testified for, in terms of what happened in Alaska with the Alaska Valdez situation, and also the Gulf. And there was a lot of emphasis there by a number of people that were very well informed beyond our expertise as to how corrosive these tar sands are. So, they will not admit. We asked them that night, in that hall, what was going through there? Were these tar sands? We didn't get them to admit they're tar sands.
But they did a search.
The tar sands, for those who do not know, and I do not know enough, but based on what I heard the last few meetings, if you do have a leak, it's incredibly toxic.
Oh, you deserve it.
Oh, yeah.
And, and the other chemicals that they can put through that pipeline. So there's the concern. Not so much pipelines going in, but what they're pushing through it and what chemicals they're using to push through it. And you'll never get them to put that in right, but I sure tell right.
Yeah, yeah, buy it right. You're right. But that's just an easy one. You're still gonna pay the taxes on it. You're still gonna pay the taxes on it. You're gonna own it. They will have control of it.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
It's like in the power lines, they have the right of way to run the electricity line.
Then why do they have to buy you?
Because they, they don't like the...
That's a really good question.
I don't think they have your files. Don't sign off on it. They don't need it to go to the pipeline.
You got too bad to miss the first four meetings, you know? This is Rob Nash, who lives on Inger Road. And he's gonna just show you a little bit about what happens if you trust Enbridge to clean up your yard.
I'm basically, a lesson of what not to do. Um, I'm at, on Inger Road, right between Clyde and Bigelow. Halfway between them. Howdy, neighbor. And, uh, we were one of the few digs last year where it was a complete replacement. They had what they called "three anomalies" in their pipeline within my section of my property. So they had to replace it. And what you're seeing now are pictures of what you saw were pictures of the house before. And I, I just wanted to show you some pictures of what we had to go through. Basic timeline of, of our project was, uh, they stepped on our property first and approached us first in September. And they left my property in September of '11.
One year.
So it took one year from the time they got onto our property to the time they actually finished all of the restoration, what they called "restoration." Um, some things that I think you needed to really keep in mind is we... Oh, sorry. Yeah, my wife's got a little point screen saver too, so don't go into this thing. Says I trust him on myself. Not me. Okay, yeah, alright, yeah, it's my wife's shirt. No. Okay, so we did not, we were very trusting souls. We did not, we didn't, we didn't question them on a whole lot of things because we were aware that this is the pipeline that burst in Marshall. And, and we thought, okay, if this is a potential hate, safety hazard, we were gonna play the good citizen and, and not stand in the way at all of what progress needed to be made on our property. Avoid any possible disaster, right? Or anything that could happen similar to what Marshall was. That was a major mistake. That was a complete mistake. We still have not settled. Uh, we drafted very concise, uh, reports of what we thought and estimations and transpired our estimations of what property losses we incurred. And they walked away from it. We gave them laundry lists of inconveniences. And, uh, you wanna, you wanna be the... Alright, mouse pad rubber. And they basically laughed at us and said, "We're not gonna give you that. We'll give you $6,000, $7,000, sorry, for, for a year." Basically, a year. And for all of the landscaping that we lost. We were, uh, did it? Take a picture of my dog. That's the, that was the only fence we had on our property. Actually, that's only temporary. You can kinda sit down, just down there. You can see that it looks good. Um, it was right outside our front window. Um, it, the east bit is literally five feet from the corner of my garage, which is attached to my house. Um, it crossed both sections of my driveway. So we couldn't get into our house or into our driveway, garage proper, with our cars for a month, at least. Um, let's see, the, the one, the most dissatisfying experience outside of being lied to and being taken for granted was probably not having use of my property for the full year. You know, we have a big family. My wife was seven months pregnant, you know, or she was pregnant throughout the whole entire project. And, uh, the amount of inconveniences are not conceived. So do yourselves a favor and think about what impacts it's gonna have on your lives. This is my sincerest recommendation to you guys. That, that way you'll have something to consider to work into your contracts. Some of the things that we went through. The stadium lights, as Beth, Beth told you about. That was our yard. I mean, it was a football field in my yard 24 hours a day. They don't dig. They just hammered this frozen soil. So at 3:00 in the morning, for a week straight, my windows are rattling, you know? My kids are waking up. My dogs are going crazy. They... I, I wanna keep the facts straight because when I get on a roll, I wanna start complaining and really, really bitching. But, um, like Beth says, the people that come out there are really nice. You know, I could probably hang out and drink beer with half these guys. You know? But they are there only to protect their interests and to keep Enbridge from spending as much money or inconvenience as possible. Spend your time understanding and getting them to proclaim or document what their plan is on their yard, on, on your property. That way you have a chance to consider what you're gonna go through and what you want to structure into your agreement. For this, for this project, we still have not settled. Um, and for this new project, they still won't even write me an email. And I have told them, "Sorry, guys. I'm not gonna talk to you anymore unless it's through a written form of communication." I will not. I've learned that lesson. He sends my wife texts, and she's all freaking out. She's frazzled. "We gotta act! We gotta do something!" No. No, we gotta get them to communicate with us written. And they won't do it. They will not do it. They haven't even come out to stake my property.
Okay, we have somebody really special here tonight. Um, John Bolandwell, uh, used to work for SET, which was a contract group working for Enbridge in, uh, Marshall cleanup.
Yep.
And he was a very brave person uh, because he could not ethically cover up the oil as they told him to. They said, "Just bury it, and nobody will know it's there." And he lost his job over that. Um, he now has many hours of video on YouTube. Bob and I spent Saturday morning sitting in bed watching You Done. And, um, it was both interesting, but it was also really depressing. Because not only is Enbridge not all for our good, they seem to specifically ignore the weaker people in the population. And in Marshall, they gave attention to the people's money. And the people who live in the trailer park 20 feet away from the oil spill, they ignored. They told them they could use their own money to move out to a motel. And of course, you know, most of us don't have extra cash sitting around to move our families out to a motel.
You, you want it deeper because what if you take a plow over it? And every year, you're losing an inch or two of soil, and it's gonna, sooner or later, that plow's gonna hit it. And they don't count those as a spill because you did it. And they can charge you for the, for everything.
Can I ask you a question on that? I've got a driveway now that's, eventually gonna be a county road. And when a gas company comes through, I made them drop it. Down about six feet, or five feet is what we agreed on.
Alright.
Now they wanna run this new line at four feet.
Three feet. Well, maybe four feet on the road.
Don't let them.
Cause he said it's gonna cost us money to dig, to dig the dirt out. So that ain't my problem. That's your problem.
Correct.
That's not your problem.
That's mine, that's theirs.
They made lots of money. Down in, down in the BP for the, the Gulf oil spill, um, before we start the video real quick. But they said nobody was sick. For two years, they said everybody was lying. They just gave them $5.6 billion for healthcare, not counting everything else. They, I mean, it, they lie, and lie, and lie until a judge says, "This is what's gonna happen."
We better end Bronze Star. I worked on the Keystone Pipeline the first time, and I'm a mowing worker. I will never work for a tar sand pipeline job.
The test by Underhold that what they did is illegal and wrong to cover up oil. I am here only to protect my community and to stop taxes from getting hurt because there will be a spill someday. And they will lie to you, and they will threaten you. I had two death threats, four slash tires. My brakes have been husked ways. I have a scar on my head from an assault. And I have a supervisor that assaults me. And it says he has more money than I can sue for. It's gonna happen. Your life will be threatened if you speak up because these guys have power.
IT takes on accusations of an Enbridge cover-up. Last July, a pipeline owned by Enbridge ruptured in Marshall, sending hundreds of thousands of gallons of oil into West Michigan's waterways. Now a former Enbridge employee is blowing the whistle on the company, accusing it of covering up oil.
That's right.
I mean, you, it's going to work? It went to Lake Michigan. We know that. I mean, we have pictures where you see the blue chain and chemicals. They've made it all the way to Lake Michigan. We think we, this is a death threat I had recently. I have a whistleblower lawsuit with Jeffrey Feiger. And they, they're trying to settle with me, and I refuse to accept any money. I am going to trial for this, no matter what. That's why I'm doing this, to make it public. They do not want this public. They had a motion, actually, to, uh, stop us from talking about the oil cover-up and showing any videos. And the judge laughed at them. He said, "That's why you're fired." He said, "You don't want them to show a jury."
I don't like Enbridge.
Why don't you like Enbridge?
Because they just keep running other people's lies.
It's just, he's a perfectly healthy child, and now he's got all these problems after the oil spill.
But they're able to do jumping jacks. They're able to do all these exercises and Jenga. I can't, I just can't do because of the oil spill.
Why are we still being searched? And they won't give me answers. "Oh, it's clean, it's safe, it's this, it's that." Live here, then. Tell me it's clean and it's safe. And it's, your company says it's not safe. Yes, like I said, I'm not gonna be as much as you. But it's recording them, we told them. Did they ever try to evacuate you?
No, they said if I go outdoors, to stay out. No more than five minutes.
Maybe died of a seizure in the house. Three days before she died, I had cancer. I mean, I got two in one week at Christmas.
And did you go to the hospital and you had to see your doctor about it?
Yeah.
And what'd your doctor say?
She said, "That's where it came from, the smell. It affected my asthma real bad." And then they had to put me on oxygen.
My memory gets absolutely shot.
And you said your lungs are really bad?
Yeah, I was just, I go with emphysema. They said I have lung, as an 83-year-old man.
And you were fine before that?
And I was fine before that. And that dog was healthy as a horse until that oil spill. And the other people that I have a dog, and they've been seriously saying, "I think a lot of things contributed to the oil spill."
Almost 2 million gallons of oil. Everything, all the water came up and it was, you know, higher than normal. So it went out way into the swamps. And that's why you saw in the trees at the very beginning of that one video that it was two and a half foot up from where the ground was. I mean, the oil went everywhere, and it, it's still, it's in the ground. It's, it soaked in. And just because a couple of years later, um, they cleaned a lot up, and, um, a lot of the oil, you can't find thick chunks except for in, um, that's underneath dirt or that is in the water. The reason why that is, cause what happens is you have a thick, um, area of oil. The grass comes through, the oil sticks to the top of the grass. And then winter comes, and then it falls back down. And then next year, it happens again, and it grabs some more of that oil. Sooner or later, you don't have a lot of thick oil there. But it's in, it's, it's in the DNA of the grass now, where animals are eating it, and it's soaked into the ground. Um, it's, tar sand oil is not biodegradable. So I'm not telling, I don't know what you guys are gonna do. I'm not here to direct you to have the pipeline put through or not. But I'm telling you, don't let them tell you what to do. You have, you, I'm telling you, you have so many rights and so much power, more than you can imagine.
Do we have a way of stopping them, though? I mean...
They are powerful.
I mean, no, I, I say no.
I say if you come together, yeah. That's what I say. But if you don't come together... But in your contract, they gotta give you 10 million for your land. And you, and you just want, and you just wanna get paid, well, then, make them pay out top dollar.
Because you're a danger and you're a help, you're family.
This, this is what they do. This, this is what they do, when there's an oil spill, they, they buy the homes, you think they're helping you by buying your home. Well, let's say I'm just averaging a hundred thousand dollar home, they bought all the appraisers, and they said, "Low bid." So, and I've had appraisers tell me that, so they low bid them all at eighty thousand, the economy's down, there's an oil spill, you're not gonna ever sell it, and so they would take eighty thousand. But because they sold their home, they can't sue for contamination on their property, so instead of keeping their house and getting fifty thousand dollars in a lump sum because their land is contaminated, Enbridge buys it for eighty, gives them five thousand dollars in convenience fee, they go try to find somewhere else, they, they probably have to foreclose on their house or whatever, they lose money in the long run. And then what Enbridge does is that they pay their workers or the hotels twenty-five hundred bucks a week to live in a hotel. So you have four workers living in a hotel that Enbridge has said, "You need to move out of this house, 'cause it's contaminated, and you shouldn't be there," so why are they putting their workers there? And the reason why is because now they're saving ten grand a month for every single house that has every single worker in it. Now they're telling their real estate agents, one just called me, to put the houses back on the market, because they plan on it being open, um, and cleared for, um, people to go in the river here in, this summer. They tried to do it in August, August first, and I made a, me and some people in my community said it's not gonna happen. And my videos are the only evidence. You would never think that that area of Suresko had oil in it, you look at it, it's beautiful, you can see through a foot or two. It's in the mud, tar sand oil doesn't float, it sinks in the mud, and it stays there until you dig it out. You have to drain all the water out, and you have to actually dig the entire thing out. And I got proof of that, they did it twenty miles away, I made a complaint about an area that was off to the side of the river. It was connected to the river, but you got the river going this way, this is off to the side of the river. They, they dammed it off on both sides, sucked all the water out, built a road through it, put sawdust through the whole thing, and dug out all the oil. Well, guess what, that's off the edge twenty miles away, what about, what's through the center of it? It's still at the bottom, they can't get it out, it's gonna stay there, so a kid gets in there, and they get it out, it pops up, and the MSDS sheet, which I had a worker sneak me this, we had, and then they had a court order to get it, it took about eight months to get this document. This document's powerful, because it specifically says, "If you breathe it in, it can kill you, if you swallow it, it can kill you." So now if they open the river back up, and you see there's still oil there today, a kid gets it, it floats up to the top, they're swimming, they swallow some of it, it gets in their lungs, and it gets them sick. But, what do you do, because the people that bought the house, or they are gonna buy the houses now, they're gonna sign confidentiality agreements, maybe that's not the term, they're gonna sign agreements that, "We buy this house, and if something happens to us, we're not gonna blame anybody else." So, let's say their kid does get sick, well, they, they already signed agreements that, well, it's their fault, they bought the property, they knew there was an oil spill, and they're taking that chance. I don't know what to tell you guys, I'm just trying to show you what's going on in my community. And Enbridge will do anything they can to, to get this pipeline through. They're using my videos in Canada right now, and, um, through Texas, uh, they're putting those lower part of Texas in, but they're not doing the top part to the Gulf, all this tar sand oil they're talking about is going to China, period. The documents never say, and they've already went through Congress for hearings, to give votes, it never says it's for Americans. It says specifically it's for export. They have no refineries up in Canada, we have over thirty down here, so they send, which tar sand oil has three times more carbons than normal oil, and it takes four hundred thousand gallons of water a day, um, to extract what they extracted one day. That, they can never reuse that water, so then they send this oil down to America, they refine it, pollute our property, pollute our land, get us sick, and they sit up there making all the profits. We can't even tax them on this oil that's coming through, um, at least though what's going down the port, um, Arthur. Thank you. And, and this is ten times better than the first one, you're doing awesome.
I am not in charge of everybody. But if you did put your email down, what I will do is I will email you, um, the documents that Wendy put together, I will email you a link to both, uh, booklets, and, um, send a copy of the first email that we sent out that has the, the link. Um, when, um, Pete Baldwin went to Powell's Enbridge office and asked for a copy of that big black book, they said, "No, you can't have it." What are you gonna do when they say, "No, you can't have it"? You say, "Well, well, I, I am going to have it," what are you going to do to get that? And he ended up, the Michigan Public Service Commission ordered Enbridge to send him a copy. Okay, so, don't, don't fall for their little smokescreen things, okay? Don't fall for the thing like when I called and said, "I need to have my property staked," for, for Mike of Enbridge to say, "Oh, no, we don't do that." Don't, don't let them bully you, okay? Um, figure out what it's gonna cost you to have them on your land, and write it down, make a contract, um, stick up for yourself, and this is gonna be like, uh, my Enbridge friend Doug Ellis says, "This is gonna be like a bad nosebleed, and it will be all better soon." Um, no, it's gonna be like a hemorrhage, and, and you're gonna be on, on life support for a while, but you know what? If, I really think, um, if we work together, especially, you know, this week, set aside a half hour to call your legislators and say, "Hey, I live here, what are you gonna do, what are you gonna do?" Because the information I uncovered today, that the US Department of Transportation is gonna wait another year before they decide whether this pipeline construction is safe or not, I mean, maybe we could stop it. Maybe we could put it off for a year, if the pipeline, if it's not safe to put the pipeline in, you know? You don't know, and I don't know, but just think of...
If that's smart, you didn't turn to it, but in a junct, uh, conjunction, saying, until this is done, saying that it's safe, we don't wanna put it.
That's right.
Yeah.
Right, I agree.
Well, we'd rather have it not at all, but you know what, the more I've learned from, from John, and Ricky Ox, Ox spoke in our last meeting, guys, this is really horrific poison they're piping through our backyard.
Well, I, I did learn that I have rights, and I do know that what they're doing is illegal. They're endangering our families, our, 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 our kids, um, and, uh, they're not being truthful about what they're doing. Um, and it is a dangerous, uh, thing that they're, they are taking to putting this oil line through. And in our meeting that we had, um, with the gentleman that came to our house, we were strongly advised by the gentleman, "Do not take and go against Enbridge, because if we do, they have more money than we do, and they will win, and we will be paid nothing, or less than what we would normally get."
And you found out that's a lie, because even if you go through court, and they take an intimate domain where a judge says, "Yes, they have the right to use it," they still have to pay you for what your property is worth, and you can get an assessment on that through the court.
And I did, I did mention to them that they were going across our property, and they are taking the five, we have five acres, and then we have a house with five acres, which is two parcels. And the one parcel, when they take and go through with the pipeline, it is going to take one of the perks out of that property, and they do, uh...
It's gonna ruin the value of the property.
Property, and they told us, and he told us, they will not give us any additional for loo, losing, you know...
Well, let a judge decide.
Yep.
Let it go intimate domain, let a judge decide, tell them exactly what you just said, that you're gonna lose property value, and the judge will say, "Well, you deserve that money for that property value that you've lost."
And then in our, in our five acres that we do have, just so you're editing this, in our five acres that we have is our house, when we look out our living room window, there is a couple trees left, they're taking those down, and you see orange posts, one, two, and now it's gonna be three, that's what we see out the living room window. In the front yard, and they...
Doesn't take much for me, what am I worried about, what am I scared of?
Yeah.
When I bought my property, I didn't even know that damn pipeline was there, and now I find out it's sludge, oil, crap, sand, oil, and I, I just can't believe that it's going through my property, I just... I am so glad John's got, you know, somebody is doing something about this. I, it just makes me ill.
I had to push her in front of the camera. She didn't wanna do this.
I mean...
People need to see what's going on.
I don't know where my clinic is, it's just...
What, what, what did my videos help you understand?
Okay, it, when they, when it breaks, and when we, the pipeline falls apart, how much it destroys the whole community around it, why the pipeline breaks, or erodes, or whatever, that it, that it happens more at a turn. I've gotta turn like five feet out from my property where, where it turns, that scares me, just that...
What about the video of the sick people?
Oh, that's what I mean, what it does to the, the people, and it's just, I had no idea, and where's the press? They, they can't tell us what's going on? I, I thought it was a hundred, this isn't something else that I learned tonight, I thought it was, they say on the press all the time, "Hundreds of thousands of gallons." Now, we've heard that now, tonight, that it's more than a million, and they have said before, I guess, that it's eight hundred thousand.
Right.
No, hundreds of thousand, why didn't they have that on the news, eight hundred thousand?
Enbridge said at the beginning it was eight hundred and nineteen thousand, then they switched it to eight hundred and forty-four thousand, making everybody think that they're trying to correct themselves and tell the truth. And the EPA has now said it's almost one point five billion, or million...
Million.
Gallons that they've recovered.
That they've recovered, and how much is...
Yeah, that's just recovered, not counting all the acreage under the river that's full of oil, and what's seeped into, you know, the ground and stuff like that.
And the kids, and what's gonna happen to you, who knows?
Hopefully I'm in heaven.
Yeah, you will, because the Enbridge will have you killed by then. I'm sorry, I didn't say that, no.
Or BP don't like me now, and Exxon, Exxon don't like me now, so, um...
Well, why don't they pump regular oil, then?
Because it's so profitable, and there's so much oil in Canada, the tar sand oil, um, that it's very, we're talking about billions and billions of dollars, maybe trillions, um... You could buy a country for the amount of oil that's up in Canada right now, uh, it's a lot of money. And that's, I am scared, I did my last solemn testament, I've told my family goodbye, worst-case scenario. I have videos for my family to, to watch if something does happen to me, and, I'm, yeah, I'm scared. But, I've learned that it ain't about me, you know?
John, you're the greatest, I'm telling you. You are the most active guy that I've ever seen, worried about this oil mess, it's just, you're the best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Like I said.
Trying to act tough right now, I don't wanna cry.
I know, I know, I don't know where your friend is, but, boy, she...
Steve's my friend.
She helped me, yeah.
Definitely your friend, yeah.
She helped me, you know, get my composure back, but...
What are you, so what are you gonna do now? Well, you're at this meeting, you've learned this stuff, you're upset.
I'm gonna be an activist now.
Are you gonna wear your T-shirt, uh, when you...
Heck, yeah, I'm gonna wear this everywhere.
And, and you need to videotape or get emails of anything that Enbridge says.
I'm telling you, it's...
And use a newspaper sometimes if you use a video, like to check out your land, to see what it looks like prior to them doing, any digging. Use a newspaper and do a video of it, um, and at least you have something in court to back you up in the future, but really get those contracts situated, that's the only way you're gonna be. At, at least get paid what you deserve, get insurance or contracts to, to protect you. And if you guys stand together, I think you can stop it.
In this one area, and like you said, they're just gonna move it somewhere else.
Maybe I can go from town to town and show the same videos, maybe everybody around the country can watch my stuff. And maybe it can get people like you to stand up, and all come together.
Why couldn't they have just gone through Canada?
'Cause Canada won't allow them to.
Right.
The, the Indian nations own the property.
It doesn't matter, it's like one earth, hello?
Yeah, but, but still, the reason why is, the Indian nations own that property, they don't have the law in Canada that you can take an intimate domain, so they can't take their property, they can't go through their property, because they said, "Stop, we don't care how much money you give me, you're not coming through." And, so that's why they wanna come through the United States.
But also, just real quick, they are destroying Canada, too.
Oh, yeah, the...
Yeah, just the process of it, uh, the people that, I've tossed the tribes up in Canada.
Trust me, I know about what they do, that's what got me interested in tar sand.
The reason they're doing this, these pipes, too, is because that oil is landlocked. They don't have an open sea up there to put it somewhere, so that's why they wanna run these pipes and then they get down to the Great Lakes.
It's easier to get it out to China and stuff.
Yeah, they wanna get it out to the Great Lakes, it's landlocked.